Pledge allegiance with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to repartake where it stands, one nation, indivisible, with equal justice and equality in
Okay, Kristen, will you please do the do the roll call?
Laura.
Here.
Jeff.
Present.
Kristen here, Chad.
Here.
Dave.
Here.
We're all here.
Are the alternates here?
No.
All right, approval of the agenda, I would like to make a correction to the lettering on the agenda, item I, public comment should be H, J should be I, and K should be J. Does anybody else have issues with the agenda? Oh. Okay, then I'll make the motion to approve the agenda with the corrections.
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, approval of the June 18th, 2025 meeting minutes, does anyone have corrections to those? Nope. Okay. Excuse me. Then I will make the motion to approve the June 18th, 2025 minutes. Do I have a second?
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Do any of the board members have a conflict of interest in the case we are hearing tonight? Is there anyone in the public that has a wishes to make a comment that is not related to the case we are hearing this evening? There will be a time during the hearing of the case to make comments on that. None? Kristen, any communications not related to the case?
There are no communications.
Okay, then we'll move on to the hearing of the case. Hearings for the case before us tonight will proceed as follows. First, the applicant will present their case, next, the zoning administrator will present the official records of the case. We will then read any communications received regarding the case, and public comment will follow. At that point, I will close the public hearing, and the board will go into closed session. After the board completes its deliberation, I will reopen the meeting, and the board will render its decision. I would also like to remind everyone that during the conduct of a hearing, all comments shall be directed to the chairperson. So, the case before us tonight is ZBA 2025-03, requested by Ian Vedder, parcel number 051410700900. A residentially zoned R1 parcel located at 4407 Trillium Ridge, Central Lake, Michigan, 49622, for a 31-foot front yard variance to construct a single-family dwelling in the required 50-foot front yard setback. Mr. Vedder, or it's Parker?
Mr. Park, Jeff.
Park, Jeff Park.
And just a reminder, you've got to be really close to that microphone.
Great.
So you can take it out if you want to and hold it.
Again, I'm Josh Park, here to represent my client Ian Vedder for his house at 4407 Trillium Ridge. Since our last meeting, we spent considerable time and effort to redesign the house based on the feedback that we got from you guys, as well as we demoed the house. And as of yesterday around noon, the current plan was staked, so I really hope you guys were able to get out there and see the stakes where the house is placed, because I think it kind of paints the picture a lot better than what we can with the photos and site plan stuff. That being said, you know, like we described before, the lot is a non-conforming lot, it does not meet the minimum standard for both size and width. It's also a through lot, which has waterfront and frontage on a second street, which I think is is a very unique situation. And based on the comments we got in the last meeting, in the minutes going through it and reviewing the ordinance, it was indicated that, like, there is some relief given when multiple 50-foot setbacks are applied to a lot. So if it was a waterfront lot with a 50-foot setback off the water, and we remove Northeast Torch Lake Drive, the rear yard would be Trillium Ridge, which would then would receive a 35-foot setback, or vice versa. If it was just a through lot without the waterfront, same thing. One of the roads would be considered the rear yard, and therefore get a 35-foot setback. So it's, I think, a very unique case that we have waterfront, road bisecting the lot, and then another road on the other side. And if you were able to get out there and see the stakes of where the house is placed, and realize that if you move that front of the house back another 15 feet, how small of a building envelope, and we have it not only meeting the setback on the 50-foot off of Trillium Ridge, both of the side yard setbacks were now meeting. And when you saw up Northeast Torch Lake Drive, and if you saw where the house was positioned, if we were to turn it to make it a less of a variance on the, it would be the northeast corner where we have the biggest encroachment, if we turn it, we're pushing the southeast corner off the cliff. So if you saw where the house was staked, we're literally right at that edge, which also gets us to conform to that setback off of Northeast Torch Lake Drive. Also, by turning the house, would put our view looking over the neighbor's frontage of Torch Lake, and more oriented towards their house, which is right on Northeast Torch Lake Drive. So it's very important to my client and the house design to have the orientation looking at as much of the waterfront as possible, especially the waterfront that our client controls. He can't control what the neighbors do with their trees or anything else that could block his view. So it's very important to us to have that house oriented the way it is. And if you also got out there to look at the stakes, you'll notice the pavement stops short of our client's property. Like, for all intents and purposes, the use of Northeast Torch Lake Drive stops, or Trillium Ridge stops at my client's property. It's been utilized as his driveway ever since. The mailboxes are on Northeast Torch Lake Drive, not on Trillium Ridge. It's literally just the residence, and specifically him, that would make it even that far up. It's not a busy road. It's, to have 50-foot off of that makes him unique to all the other houses on Trillium Ridge. You know, none of them are even close to that far off. It would make it look odd, in addition to his house being significantly smaller than most. Like, if you looked at the stakes, you can also see that we're not overbuilding. It's not a gigantic house by any stretch.
How many square feet is the footprint with this new plan?
It's essentially the same square footage, but we eliminated the garage. The whole attempt was to preserve as much of the original use, and we eliminated the garage and some of the other space to accomplish that.
Last meeting, you guys had pointed out that in the past, you had discussed with other applicants that a garage is not necessarily mandatory or required in the building. So the way the property is set up, there's no feasible way to put a garage on the property without losing a significant amount of square footage in the house. So it really came down to, do I want a garage, based on your guys' conversations last time, or do I want the square footage? So I reluctantly deleted the garage from the project, and figured, hey, maybe down the road, there's an opportunity for that, or maybe a neighbor will sell me some land or something like that. But in the meantime, the square footage is important, because again, ironically, this week actually happens to usually be my giant family reunion that I'm actually building this house for. It's actually Wednesday through Saturday, generally, so we're not having it this year, obviously, in a pile of dirt. But at the same time, so that's, to me, the square footage was the more valuable aspect of that property, to be able to have the space to bring as much of my family, friends, et cetera, to enjoy and view, you know, obviously, a wonderful piece of property on Torch Lake.
Okay, thanks. But just to refresh my memory, I don't recall exactly what the square footage of was the pre of the previous one.
It's 3,000.
3,000 square feet, okay, thank you.
So, I guess, to finish my comments, based on the last meeting, the the buildable envelope is 2,200 square feet after you apply all these setbacks, which is roughly 20% of what a normal conforming lot would be. I think it's important, like I previously said about the way the setbacks are being applied, it's got extensive amount of setbacks which are creating this unique situation. And the ordinance doesn't specifically address this situation. So I think it's important that, that's why the ZBA exists, is to recognize these unique situations, and and use that to apply logic to the situation. The saying that the 2,200-square-foot trapezoid that's left to build, I think is insane that the minimum footprint is 960 feet, is a misinterpretation of what an ordinance is said to do. It's not, it's not intended for people to build the minimum. It's, it's what, you would diminish the value of neighbors if you built a tiny house on this piece of property. I think that another thing to really point out is that...
We left, we left, when we did the demo of the house, we left. You were able to go to the site, and you noticed that, right, you know, there's a giant maple tree growing. We purposely left that there during demo, because the current house is actually, that that basically indicated the very front of the house that was there prior to demo, and the new house is actually further back off the road than the old house was.
Can you bring that?
I have. So there's the maple, we see the house is directly right up to it. And the new house is actually about a foot and a half further behind that tree than the house was. There's maple right here, it's kind of hard to see, but the house actually is about a foot off of that.
Yeah, if you were out there in the office, that maple tree is in front of us.
Yeah, when I drove up, I was like, whoa.
I don't want to hear, I think you saw the two maple trees that are on the ridge, they were in the deck of the previous house, and they were in front of the new, the new deck. Like, they would have to go because of the walkout, but in terms of the placement of the house, it does not extend into those two maple trees.
I think it's important to point out, too, the last meeting we were here, we were asking for four variances, we're now asking for one. And because of that, we've actually, from the previous home that was there, we've actually eliminated basically three setbacks, and made the house smaller on all three sides of those other sides than even the previous house was that was there before.
I mean, that's the gist of it, you know, appreciate your guys' time and consideration of this. I think it's a, you know, it would be a really nice house on the street, fits in with the rest of the house, houses that's further away from Trillium Ridge than any of the existing houses. And I think it's important to realize that the ordinance created has a unique situation with all, the seven houses on Trillium Ridge, especially this one being the very last one, is definitely a unique situation that the ordinance does not adequately address. You know, everything else, it definitely does, but the fact that these are all non-conforming through lots with waterfront is definitely a unique situation that, you know, warrants strong consideration. Thank you.
The current house, this being the plan, is 41 feet from the edge of Trillium Ridge to the nearest point to the road, which is 24 feet more than anybody else on my street. I think that's also an important number to consider as well. Thank you.
Okay. And the board have additional questions? Okay, Sarah.
So you have the staff report in your pocket, so I'm just going to be brief and quick about it, being that you are familiar with the site, it was here last month with the other variance request. While it was here, you know, this is a separate case, we have to build our own record based on the information that we have available. And so if you're referencing something from the old case, we need to make sure everybody knows what's happening, and add that to the record, just in general, for that. This was published in the Elk Rapids News on June 26, and the 300-foot mailings were sent out on June 21 to all of the neighbors. There was some mentioning, and on the first page of the report that I have in here, we've got the front setbacks and the side setbacks, as well as the minimum area, that 960 square foot. So if you're building a home in the township, it has to have at least 960 square feet in the township, and it has to be at least 20 feet by 20 foot wide for that new structure. We don't have a maximum on it, it's only just the minimum, as far as the township's concerned with that. There was some discussion, and I know at the last meeting, too, about fronts and rears and all of that, and so I tried to explain it in the staff report, but essentially, when I'm looking at this, and that's an interesting perspective, you had mentioned that, but for that, and I'm saying that the water would be your front, so we're going to, we're going to flip your front and your rear traditionally right on the waterfront.
Right.
I would say that the water is your front, so that's 50, and then you're, the next spot, if you walk from the water, and we're headed back up the lot, kind of north, but kind of not, but, you know, and we're walking back up the lot, you're going to hit Northeast Torch as your next property line. I'm saying that is the rear, so that's your 35. Then you go across North Northeast Torch, and then you have another front from Northeast Torch, and then as you continue back, when you get to Trillium Ridge, that is a front as well. So it's a little bit different than my position last time, when we discussed setbacks. For that, because of the two roads and the water for that, but the setbacks on the structure itself, they're not changing from the last application that we had. We still have, on that portion of the lot, two fronts, two sides, kind of taking out that waterfront portion of the property.
So you end up with two 50-foot setbacks?
Right.
Because you've got two fronts, which would be very unusual.
Right. Yeah, I mean, we do deal with that on some other properties, but generally, other properties in the township, and that have been in front of the planning, or I'm sorry, the zoning board of appeals, the portion of land on the water side is usually large enough to build a house on. So you're, and that's where people want to build, right? So a lot of times, we're still, we can use that rear, the setbacks get flipped, and it makes sense, and then, but we have applied that 50-foot setback on the other side of an easement back, like somebody builds a garage on the other side. We still are doing front, you have a front for them, instead of two fronts. So that's consistent in how we're treating waterfront property that's divided by a road. The first road you run into ends up being your rear, and then everything else kind of goes like a traditional lot at that time. And we do do setbacks from the easement that runs through the middle of the lot.
Okay, I also make sure I have this completely crystal clear. So the front is down at the water, the rear is still that water property, but before you get to east, or what, Torch Lake Drive?
Yep.
And then the next front is on the other side of the road, and then because that it's no longer waterfront, it hits front, front, side, side.
Yes.
Like any other lot in our township that's not waterfront, is front, front, side, side.
Right.
Okay.
So, that's with two roads, but how many through lots do we have? Is it just this section, or are they all over the township?
I think it's more limited.
Pardon?
It's more limited than having the road run through the middle of your parcel, having a through lot where you have a road on each end.
Right.
That is more unique, but I don't, I can't tell you how many. I mean, this road for sure, with Trillium Ridge there, sure, there's a couple others, but I don't have a number.
Okay, but, but just to be clear, the ordinance does not specifically address setbacks for a through lot? So we're interpreting it as, as two fronts, but our, that has two fronts, but our ordinance doesn't specifically address two fronts, two front yards.
It talks about a through lot.
It defines it, but does it?
I mean, the easiest way that I kind of look at it is anything that's against a road is a front. You know, that's because you're talking about easements and roads and property lines that divide from an easement or access for that. But you're right, the last time when we looked at this, there was a definition for through lot, there isn't any kind of exclusion or any further language within the ordinance that talks about a through lot, other than in the definition section.
Is Trillium Ridge a, is Trillium Ridge a county or a township road?
It's a private road.
It's a...
Isn't that just an easement? That, like, each, it's a right-of-way, so each property owner allows the other property owners to cross their easement.
It would be an easement.
So we do have those, that's exactly what's down all along the waterfront. If you go down Bay Colony, and you go over to Bayview, all of those lots extend on the other side, and it's an easement.
But none of them have another road abutting it. They get the benefit of, that's, they have the property between the waterfront and that easement. And so they're only get, they're only being penalized by a 35-foot setback from that road, because the waterfront is a 50. And any house that is not on the water, still has, even though it doesn't have a road behind it, it still has a 35-foot backyard and a 50-foot front yard.
But not, I would beg to differ.
There's very few, if any, other than on Trillium Ridge, that could be defined as having two 50-foot setbacks.
I can't argue that with you. I, I won't agree with you, because I know of some, but it, I do, it, there are some.
That have 50-foot setbacks.
But, okay.
If this is not a county road, and it's just a private drive, so to speak, with the association, why are we dealing with, why are we dealing with the distance from Trillium Ridge to the house?
Because the ordinance talks about an easement, an access easement, that there's setbacks from it. Because people use that to count as frontage for land divisions, so if we call it a driveway, it doesn't end up having frontage to meet the minimum lot width requirements in the ordinance. But essentially, even though it's a private easement, it's counting as a road, it's counting as access, and our ordinance says if it's an access easement, it's a road.
And there are a lot of private roads in township.
Right. And there's some that are unnamed, and they're just easements, but they still are providing access. So regardless if it's a public, private, or it has no name, we just, from a zoning perspective, we are focused on, it's an access easement. It's a right-of-way, and we're regulating setbacks from a right-of-way.
And particularly in this case, because that's how you access the property.
Correct.
You can't do it.
But he is the last property, it's, it deadens at his property.
True.
So once he can get there.
Okay. Any other questions for Sarah? Mr. Vedder, did you want to say something else?
I was just going to, I was just going to bring up a comment that was made in the last meeting, just because I wouldn't think it would be very consistent on how we're kind of recognizing this. And you guys had mentioned last night, last time, that a front yard, 50-foot, I'm sorry, I'm going to wrong one, let me pull that. A front yard, 50-foot setback, it says that there is leniency when there is, you guys said that there's leniency on those when there are two 50-foot setbacks occur, which my property would. I also look at it as kind of what she was just explaining, where there's the lake, and if I were able to fit a house between the lake and Northeast Torch Lake Drive, you guys would only require me to be 35 feet off of Northeast Torch Lake Drive. But I'm way up on a hill, away from everything and anything, but you're requiring me to be 50 feet off of Trillium Ridge. To me, this is a perfect situation, where the zoning board and the ZBA exist, to look at that and say, okay, we, Trillium Ridge was not considered directly in this ordinance. Every other resident of that street has now lost property values and the ability to build structures that are comparable to other areas on the lake, because now we have lake, road, hill, an additional 50-foot setback on both sides. I mean, I wish that I would have had the guy stake what the house would look like if I had to follow both 50-foot setbacks, because it's basically like a 19-foot wide rectangle that curves on the end, where it would basically leave me no living space whatsoever, and would also, like he had expressed, at that point in time, would have to be turned sideways, and I'd be directly looking into paning trees and right over her roof, which would actually affect her property values down the road, and it's because I'm sure nobody would want to come by her home, but my house is looking right over top of it. I just wanted to make sure that when we were discussing some of those things, you guys were keeping that in your consideration from the last meeting.
Thank you. Okay. All right, Kristen, do we have any, and do we have any public comment? Okay. Then at this time, I will close the public, public hearing, and the board will go into closed session. And it is 6:26. Okay, Sarah, you want to explain what we're doing here?
Sure, so we're going to try something new, and I'm going to project up here your findings, and let me adjust the lighting here. And this is in an effort to be able to have the ZBA be able to look at everything, and what the criteria are, and what we come up with. So I am going to, these are some draft findings, just to get you started. I'm going to edit in real time for you and add, and in the end, hopefully, you'll be able to say yes, that's, I agree, or no, I don't agree, to whatever the criteria is. So, let's see how it works.
Okay, so we're going to start with the general findings of fact, and I think we pulled a number of these off of the...
Previous one.
Previous, from the previous meeting, the findings from the previous meeting, because they're still relevant, they're still, so, let's just go through quickly, and then if, as we go through, if you disagree that these are still relevant, then speak up, and we'll discuss and possibly take it off. All right, so number one, the lot is non-conforming, as the lot size, as well as frontage, do not meet the minimum required for the R1 district. Number two, the building is a through lot, which the zoning ordinance does not address. Number three, oh wait, I missed, I'm sorry. Number two, the building envelope is 2,208.00753 square feet. Number three, this is a through lot. Number four, the zoning ordinance allows for a 35-foot setback from the road for waterfront properties. Number five, the terrain is very steep, leading down to Northeast Torch Lake Drive from the parcel. Number six, the property lines are skewed. And, number seven, oh, this was, okay, this was not on our last findings, was it? This seven was not on our last findings. But that was something that, that was one of the ones that I thought should be added. Conforming lot would typically have at least a 9,200-square-foot building envelope. Any thoughts, questions, additions, subtractions?
Per our earlier discussion, there are an indeterminate number of similar double-frontage properties in the township, right?
Yes.
Okay. I'm mulling whether there's a finding there or not, but I, given we don't have a number, I guess it's not really, we don't have the facts.
You know what, I think that that probably should be addressed under the uniqueness of the property relative to the rest of...
Agreed, yeah.
Okay. Okay, so are we in agreement, then? Everybody just say yes, if you're in agreement that these are general finding of facts.
Yes.
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 Okay, thank you. So we move on to the criteria to substantiate a practical difficulty, and we have four criteria. Criteria A, strict compliance with restrictions governing area setback, frontage, height, bulk, density, or other non-use matters will unreasonably prevent the owner from using the property for a permitted purpose, or will render ordinance conformity unnecessarily burdensome. And we had with, the building envelope is sufficient enough to build a larger home than the minimum required by the zoning ordinance. And a house of similar size can fit within the compliance of the zoning ordinance. Skewed building, okay, this was, I'm sorry, this was one that I thought should be taken off. And those are my notes afterwards. Skewed building envelope would make it difficult to build a 2,000-square-foot house without a multiple, multiple setbacks along the lot line, or the setback line. We take this one off. Discussion on that.
I'm sorry, all of number two, or the parenthetical part?
Uh, I'm sorry, all of, oh, those were, that was my thoughts. I didn't think those were going to go up there. Sorry. Those were my thoughts. So the, the, the finding was a house of similar size can fit within compliance of the zoning ordinance. And I feel like that's not necessarily true because of the skewed setback lines.
A house is similar size?
So this was a, the size that he had proposed before. I think that was the intention of, so he had proposed building the house, but he was violating four setback lines, or asking for variance on four setback lines. And we said a house of similar size can fit within compliance of the zoning ordinance. I don't believe a house of similar size could fit within the four setback lines.
I can't prove that correct or incorrect. I mean, I suppose if you had a really good architect, you could. I mean, I mean, number, the building envelope is sufficient enough.
It's closed right now.
So, I mean.
Is, are you looking at maybe creating, this finding should read something different?
I think that's what we're headed for, right?
Yeah.
Okay, let's hear.
We're on number two, right?
Yes.
We're on number two.
And we can scratch it all and start over.
I would just scratch it and just, I mean, I don't know.
Sounds more like an opinion when you're saying similar without having numbers up there, so.
Let's pick it up. What about new number two?
Well, so my opinion is that the skewed property lines and building envelope make it more difficult to build on this property.
Agreed.
Agreed? Okay.
So, what do you think?
And that, the third one there that's up there, I thought should go because they have reconfigured the structure and are proposing a new, so now we can
Okay. So we're down to just one?
Well, I would have, I would add the skewed property lines and building envelope make it more difficult to build on this property.
And the grade as well.
And, so I was, yeah, we can add that. The skewed property lines, building, skewed building envelope and grade make it more difficult to build on this property. Is that what you're saying?
She made it two, but yes.
I, but
Okay, that's
But if that, if you take that piece, that piece of property is away from the water, and if you, we don't have anything in our ordinance that says anything that says people are guaranteed a view, a view of the woods, a view of the bay, a view of torch, a view of anything. So if you look at that lot, that buildable lot as-is, it's buildable with, with the setbacks. So what I'm struggling is, is the only thing the client has said is that they can't build on it because they don't have a view. We don't have an ordinance that says you're guaranteed a view on your lot.
Right.
So I, I, I'm struggling with saying the grade makes it more difficult to build on this property, or the skewed property lines and building envelope make it more difficult to build. Because if that lot was in the middle of the woods, and you weren't trying to situate your house to look at the water, it's a great lot to build on.
He didn't, they didn't say they couldn't build because of the view.
Right.
They didn't want to build because of the view, because the view was important.
It's very important. I mean, it's, it's, it's very important, and I recognize that. What I'm struggling is, I can't find anything in here that addresses that.
Well, I'd suggest this. In this, this criteria, it's not preventing, well, it says unreasonably prevent, or would unnecessarily, be unnecessarily burdensome. And I, to me, it also matters in the next criteria, the impact on the neighbors. And to build within that lot, as he, as Mr. Park described, you're going to be looking at your neighbors, or impacting the other residents nearby, both the one in the township and out of the township. So I don't know how we bring the two criteria together, but
Well, I mean, you could, you can say, because this is the neighboring, right? No substantial relief, but you, when, in going through that, you can, one may make, say yes, and one may say no, based on whatever it is for the neighboring. So I guess you may have to do kind of a straw poll on if you agree with this criteria or do not agree with the criteria.
Right. So, all right, I'm not, at this point, I don't see anything, we don't have anything up about the view, so I'm not following why, I, I'm not suggesting, is somebody suggesting we put something up there about the view?
No, but I'm saying, I can't agree with number two, the skewed property lines and building envelope make it more difficult to build on this property. I disagree.
Okay.
Again, I would compare the, the unreasonably prevent or unnecessarily burdensome. I think it is unreasonably prevent, words, 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 or will, conformity will cause, will be unnecessarily burdensome. So I don't think we have to meet both of those, you have to meet one or the other of them. And I'm not saying, I'm not arguing view, that we're reading view in here. I think it's more the orientation of the property, and I heard him say that if we put the building within the envelope, and the, the front corners often
So we've taken the word difficult out and putting burden?
Well, we're, we're looking at unnecessarily burdensome.
Or, we're looking, yeah, unnecessary
Instead of difficult, or not?
Well, it wouldn't prevent the owner from using the property for the permitted purpose. He could build a 900-some square-foot house on it and use it for a permitted purpose. But that's, you know, not an ideal situation. We're not trying to force people to build 900-some square-foot houses. It's just a minimum standard. But I do think there's, should, some consideration should be given to unnecessarily burdensome. Because as I stated in my thoughts on taking that one out, is that the skewed building envelope would make it difficult to build, you know, I, I would consider a 2,000-square-foot or even a 3,000-square-foot house on, on a lot that size, water, so to speak, waterfront property, if, if we're defining it that way, not to be, you know, overbuilding, or trying to do something that is not normally accomplished on lots of that size, going back to the general criteria of the nine, did I, did we put that in the general, or was that?
No, it was, on the staff report, it has the 960, but the general findings don't mention 960.
No. Okay, in the general, we said a conforming lot would typically have at least a 9,200-square-foot building envelope.
Yes.
So, so that is kind of, I guess, shaping my opinion to a certain extent, that I think it would be very difficult, and, you know, because of the skew, if you were saying, you'd be either having to step the house back, which would be outrageously expensive to build a house like that, and it would make the interior of the house, the rooms, pretty funky. So, so even though it's, the building envelope is technically 2,000, what did we say, 2,200 square feet? Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay. That, you couldn't, for a, from a practical standpoint, build a 2,200-square-foot house inside that envelope. That's
Yes.
That's, that's
And, and also, I mean, when you're saying skewed property lines, the, I guess it's the eastern property line comes in at an angle also. So you're, you're narrowing as you get away from, first you have the grade, which is quite steep, and then toward the, the other part of the property, right, away, that would be in your setback, you're narrowing to, making it more difficult to orient the house away from that.
Right. Okay.
So should I add to number two, that you're narrowing where the house is being built?
Kristin, would that help if we described what skewed means more?
You guys are going to see how good of a speller I am?
Yeah.
Get to see how well I spell. I'm glad you're doing it, not me.
I can already tell you type that.
I'm a big fan of spell check. Any additional thoughts on, on criteria A? Any additional findings of fact?
Is it relevant to talk about the first structure that was there, and how it crowded into the setbacks, or is that?
No, I don't think so, because that's demolished, it's gone, we're starting really with a fresh slate as far as the house goes. The only thing relevant that's still on the property, I think, is the septic in the well.
Right.
And that, and so I think that is addressed in the self-created, because somebody put it on the property, it's become a part of the property. So that's the only thing that I really see that's, that's relevant there.
I agree. It's the property, the house is gone, so we don't have to, it's gone.
Okay. All right, so are we
Sorry, you were just about to Referring back to something I was saying before, the, it, the property is also accessed from the Trillium Ridge side. So even though we have the two setbacks, it's, it's relevant that you're building in that direction, rather than trying to access the property from Torch Lake Drive. I don't know if that's a necessary finding of fact, but, but
Okay, state again, explain again.
So, can I ask a question? So are you saying that finding the fact is that their access to the property is off of Trillium Ridge and not off of Torch Lake Drive? But we don't necessarily know that, because all we got was, we don't, they didn't give us, like, last time they gave us, you know, all the, the floor plans and all that, and all we have is this, this, this one, which is just the one.
Mm-hmm.
So we don't really know the, what the walkout basement, if there is a walkout basement or not, or if there's a second story, or any of that.
Yeah, I was thinking about it, not, not in terms of the actual structure that they're building, but the design of the property. And Sarah, we have a, the address is Trillium Ridge.
Right. This is the site plan, so they have the driveway, I guess you could say the driveway is access to off of Trillium Ridge.
But it's the fact of the two roads that creates the double setback. Which is adding, it's an additional burden, I guess. I don't know if we need it to get there.
So I think we addressed that in criteria B. Our point number three there was a front yard 50-foot setback is the Trillium Ridge side, according to the definition of front lot line in the zoning ordinance. That would be the side you drive, you enter the property from, correct?
Right.
So we do have that in
Okay. Sorry, I didn't
B.
I was thinking through the burdens.
Well, and we can come back and add to these if need be.
Yeah. We think we, okay, so far, are we good with the three that are up there? Should we move on?
Yes.
Okay. Criteria, criteria B, the variance requested is the minimum variance needed to provide substantial relief to the applicant, and be fair to other property owners, and be consistent with the spirit of the ordinance. So I, let's see, I put it there. Public comment is slash is not in support of the variance. We haven't heard any additional public comment. The public comment from the previous meeting
Was all supported.
Was in support. But do we, but do we just take that off because we didn't have public comment this time?
Unless you want to say we received no public comment regarding this request. I mean, that would be the accurate statement.
Okay.
I think we should put that.
Okay. Number two, the applicant, so
Those are from the old one, right?
Those can all go away.
So that can all go, yeah, those can all go away, in my opinion. The ordinance allows for a 35-foot road setback on waterfront properties. Spirit of the ordinance seems to indicate that relief should be given when two 50-foot setbacks occur. And maybe, I don't know if that was worded quite accurately, it, the, I think what I, I think I had suggested that one at the last meeting, and I think that maybe indicate that relief should be given was the wrong terminology, but the, it doesn't, but in all of our lots, if you have a front yard and a backyard, we've defined one's the front and one's the back, and, and they, and one's a 50, and one's a 35-foot. And it doesn't really address two front yards, you know, a through, a through lot.
I would rather say it that way. I, I don't know where we can find the spirit of the ordinance in the ordinance, not, I don't mean to sound
Well, I don't think the, so in my opinion, the ordinance didn't intend that you had
I, I think that's right.
50-foot setbacks.
It, yes. It thinks you have a 50-foot on one side and a 35 on the other.
And it didn't really take into consideration this situation.
For sure. Agreed. I, I agree with your conclusion, I just don't want to
Okay, so
I don't want to have a finding of fact that the spirit of the ordinance fact that the spirit of the ordinance tells us to do something.
All right, so...
Could be problematic.
Help, help us reword that, you did well.
Is it just the second part of this?
Yes, I think so. And, and, let me get the thought out, and then we can figure out the words, but an ordinary conforming property would have...
A front and a back.
A 50-foot front and a 35-foot rear.
Mm-hmm. Maybe that's a better way of saying it, an ordinary conforming property would have a 50-foot front and a 35-foot rear setback?
Right.
What are you trying to say here in this? What were you gonna say? This is a fact.
Well, it goes to the, the, that the property doesn't fit within the ordinary structure of the ordinance, right, because we've got two 50-foot setbacks, which is unusual, not anticipated by the ordinance. And I think that's where you get to, maybe it's suggesting that this is the kind of case where you would want to look at.
Okay, help me understand, so, the waterfront, he has the 50-foot and the 35-foot, right? And now we're looking at the other side of the road, which it isn't waterfront anymore. So it's, it's 50 and 50, why?
But the property would be listed as waterfront, wouldn't it? It's not two separate lots.
It's once, it's, is it correct in saying it's one lot with an easement, a road easement running through it? Or is it two separate lots? I mean...
I don't think it'd be two separate lots.
I think we're missing a step here, aren't we? The, the point on the waterfront property is that if you have waterfront property, you can treat the waterfront as the front for your 50-foot, and then it allows you to use your 35 on the back.
Right.
As opposed to what would normally be the case.
Right, that's the opposite, right.
But because we have the two road, it's really the through lot, because we have the two roads, I think your, the 35 is more, it is a finding of fact, but it's not really telling us anything here except that there is deference in the ordinance for waterfront.
Well, I think, Kristen, what you're saying is that, yes, there is this waterfront, but this portion of the property that doesn't apply to essentially, because you're building on the through lot part instead of the waterfront. So do you actually need the standard because that waterfront setback is not applying to what we're building?
If, if you're looking at, there's 50-foot of waterfront, the front edge is 50-foot, so we got that covered, and so the back of lot, it only has to be 35 feet, is this?
Yep.
And that's what he wants to have, he wants 35 feet on the, because we're saying...
He's actually asking for more, he's asking for a variance, so I'm not sure that we're not maybe getting into the weeds here, the reason I brought it up is because, the way you phrased it, the zoning ordinance didn't anticipate this situation, and so that might be cause to consider a request, in my opinion, but that, but that's not, that part is my opinion, it's not the finding of fact, the finding of fact, to me, is that, that, I would just say the typical, it's typical to have one 50-foot setback and one 35-foot setback in R1 districts, and that the zoning ordinance didn't anticipate this situation.
And just to be clear, that goes to the point of fair to other property owners and consistent with the ordinance, right?
Yep, I like that.
Yeah.
I'm comfortable with that.
Yeah, that's a fair point, the waterfront is sort of a red herring, isn't it? It's there, but it's not.
Right.
Right, yeah, we're not going to get ourselves lost in that.
Okay, and then, and then, the third one was on the previous, front yard 50-foot setback is the Trillium Ridge side according to the definition of front lot line in the zoning ordinance.
Thought we'd been talking about the front of the house was facing the lake, the front of the house was facing the lake, we've been talking about it that way through this, haven't we?
Well, that's, but, okay, so, but this is, that's why this is a little more complicated and can be confusing.
So which is the front of the house, which way?
According to the diagram that the applicant submitted, it says front porch, and that faces Trillium Ridge.
So that...
So I would assume that's technically, they're driving up there, that's where they're going to park, that's where people come in, I mean, this is what I'm interpreting, and then the rest is looking out and on their deck.
Okay, so that'd be our definition, is we go forward, the front of the house is Trillium Ridge.
Correct.
It's also the address for what it's worth.
The mail?
Yeah, yeah.
My address, everything is...
Okay, does anyone have additional findings of fact they'd like to add to this one?
Maybe it's, it's somewhat in reference to our earlier discussion, but they meet three of the four required setbacks, as well as, Sarah, I believe, adhere to other height, bulk, et cetera.
Right.
How about applicant has reconfigured structure to be, to comply with three of the four setbacks?
Right.
Yeah, that works.
One I might add is the property is at the end of the private road easement, so there is no through traffic and, and no safety issues posed?
I'm fine with that.
What's the rest of that?
Okay, so, let's see, the property is at the end of the private road easement, so there is no through traffic and, no safety issues posed.
Does anyone else have a finding of fact for this one?
Pardon?
I was just asking if anyone else had a finding of fact on this one, from our board.
That kind of covers what I said, but I was going back and comparing to last time, which apparently we're not doing, we're looking at this plan.
Yeah, well, we're looking at this plan, we pulled the findings of facts from the last time that didn't change based on the change in plans, and we're adding anything, any other finding of facts that we've come up with.
But you're right, Chad, we're just looking at the application in front of us.
What I had said, I said fewer variations in the second application, smaller footprint, no garage, showing that there was a change made in order to comply, but if we're not looking at it that way, then that's not really...
Well, and would you say that kind of...
Say those again, let's...
I said fewer variations in the second application, smaller footprint and no garage, so showing to try to comply more from last time.
Would you say that, that's covered in four, applicant has reconfigured the structure to meet three of the four setbacks?
Yeah.
So, on my site visit, I also stood on the property where his house was, looked down the road, looked at the other setbacks of the other houses, and I would add requested setback variance is consistent with the setbacks of other houses on Trillium Ridge, better than some, and so that, to me, that kind of goes to fair to other property owners, they're not, they're not building out further, so.
That's, that's similar to mine, because mine said that, I felt that the setback was, was in, was consistent with other houses, so I was saying the same thing.
Okay.
Do you think number six summarizes your thoughts?
Summarizes?
That way, you just mentioned that additional finding.
Yeah, the proposed front setback is similar to existing houses on Trillium Ridge, I think that's...
That covers how I, yeah.
Okay, anything else on B?
Well, wait a second, I'm going back to six, because that says the proposed front setback is similar to existing houses on Trillium Ridge, but what I heard you say is that you stood there and you cited it, and so you felt that it was, that what they're, what, I guess I want to make sure the proposed front setback is what the applicant is saying and not what, correct?
Okay, you want to restate that?
So, I'm questioning the word proposed versus requested.
Oh, okay, yeah, okay, go ahead.
Because is proposed from the zoning board, or, you know, is it from the zoning ordinance, or is it from the, so that's kind of a key thing there, right?
Yes.
What I'm hearing you say, what I said is when I stood and looked there, where they're putting the house, it's...
Is consistent with...
It's consistent with the other houses, and in some aspects, better.
Right.
So it's really the requested.
Yes, I would agree with that.
Okay, so, because that's kind of an important word. Okay.
Let's do it.
Okay. C, the need for the variance is due to unique circumstances peculiar to the property and not generally applicable, applicable in the area or to other properties in the same zoning district, and we had, there are many non-conforming properties both in area and width in Torch Lake Township, and, and we haven't been able to verify this, but it, I can't think of any other areas that have a similar property, I just kind of re, property issues, I rewrote number two slightly, the combination of non-conforming width, irregular lot lines, steep grade, and multiple 50-foot setbacks due to being a through lot create unique circumstances particular to only a few properties in the zoning district, basically, my understanding is that all these issues really only affect those houses on Trillium Ridge. So, and this is where...
I don't disagree with you, I think when we get to the last part of that, that we're defining what's in the zoning district, I don't, I'm not sure I'm comfortable with that.
Okay.
And I don't know that we need it, and I don't know that it changes the precedent in the future.
Well...
If another property comes along and has a similar, we'll, we'll look at this, but...
I'm not, I'm not comfortable with that up there.
So it is applicable to other properties on Trillium Ridge, but...
Well, the finding of fact...
Defining the same zoning district, that's, that's the issue here, and that, I think we get...
That's within R1, though, right?
Yeah, R1, is it...
The period right after circumstances, the next to the rest?
That's what I would propose, but...
Okay.
I mean, again, if another similar circumstance comes up in the future, this, we're creating precedent, right? That's our concern here.
Okay.
So I don't think that it matters whether we try to say what's, what else is in the district, I'm just not sure that we have those facts in front of us.
And then we also had, the steep grade is a common feature of lots in the area.
What did you write in number three? Oh, I, I'm sorry, yeah, got it, yeah.
Okay, any additional thoughts on these or additional findings of fact that you feel should be added to this?
I don't have any to add, does anyone else?
Okay, we'll move on to D.
Do you want me to read it?
Sure.
Okay. D, the problem and resulting need for the variance has been created by strict compliance with the zoning ordinance, not by the applicant or the applicant's predecessors, and the finding of facts that we had from before are, one, the septic is in the setback and does not affect the building envelope, I think we would all say that's still a fact, the, two, the well is in the building envelope but close to the setback line and does not substantially affect the building envelope, and then, one that we had before that may not, may not be relevant now is the requested variance, which is far greater than the minimum variance needed for reasonable relief, is created by the applicant, so that we can take off.
So, that one bothered me, and, but I did it last time, but I don't think it affected our decision on that particular criteria, but just for the board's review, because we did put that on last time, I brought the article that references that subject, it is from Michigan State University, MSU Extension, Providing Practical Difficulty for Dimensional Variance, and I feel for the edification of the board, this should be read, to mind reading.
Sure. I think it's this, just this one right there. Okay. The issue, is the issue self-created, the fourth standard is widely misunderstood among ZBA members, the proper interpretation is to ask whether the applicant took some affirmation, affirmative action that created the need for the variance, such as making an unusual land division shape, filling the entire building envelope so that a porch must necessarily extend into the setback area, digging a pond, et cetera, being self-created... must necessarily extend into the setback area, digging a pond, et cetera. Being self-created includes actions of the current property owner and actions of all the previous owners. So the applicant may not have caused the problem leading to a variance request because a previous owner did so, but is still considered self-created and would indicate the variance should, the variance request should be denied. The standard is inappropriately applied if a ZBA member sees the presence of the applicant before the ZBA as a self-created situation. This mindset would lead to the conclusion that all variance requests are self-created. It is not an applicant's desire for a variance that is a self-created problem. It is an applicant's previous action to fill the buildable, buildable envelope with structures or divide the parcel into an unusual, unusual shape that is self-created problem.
Thank you. Okay, so we can all agree now that number three should be removed, right?
Yes.
I just think to the point that we were saying that there were four setbacks there, and we had discussion about that in the previous application. That's the reason it was there. Maybe we didn't define it well.
Okay. All right, any other additions to this? Or discussion? Are you ready to move forward?
Should we also include, or does it matter if we include the same unusual shape? We've already said it, but.
Yeah, I think you could. I mean, when I'm kind of reading this criteria, you're talking about the problem or result is strict compliance with the zoning ordinance.
Mm-hmm.
And we, in the zoning ordinance, we don't regulate well in septic at all, but you're two criteria related to that. So I think we should have something additional related to, you know, the zoning ordinance is causing this issue.
It's because of the shape and the features of the property, right? Both the.
So you like.
Again, whatever we said, not skewed, but we use a different word.
You're skewed right here.
I mean, I think, I would say that probably two and three there apply to D as well.
Why don't we bring them down there and then read through it and see?
And you're good.
I must've got distracted when I was setting this up. I apologize, because I was going to make it all bigger to see and everything. Something must have happened.
It's okay.
So are you going to walk through then, or kind of go, is the standard met or not met, and get a straw poll on it?
Yeah, that's what I'd like to do. I think, go back to criteria A and. I was going to do a roll call vote, if that's okay.
Going for it?
Yeah. Kristin, will you do?
What are we voting on?
Okay, so we're looking at, we're looking at criteria A. Everybody take a minute, read through, and decide, and decide whether you think this criteria is met or not.
Okay, okay.
Oops, sorry. Any changes to this criteria? Okay.
Let's vote.
All right.
Well, I hate to raise one more, but I mean, strict compliance would also be inconsistent with, similar to your other point, would be, strict compliance with the ordinance would, would render a building inconsistent with neighboring property structures, right? The other houses are bigger or closer to the setbacks because they were built before the ordinance.
Okay.
So you want to add that as a criteria?
Do we agree that should be added? I'm fine with that.
As a finding of fact, yeah.
Strict compliance.
I said again, with the ordinance results in a structure inconsistent with neighboring properties, or is that what I was saying?
I guess I don't understand.
Yeah, what do you mean by inconsistent with?
The other houses on the street are larger and closer to the setbacks than if you adhered to the, the setbacks here, you'd end up with a, a small trapezoid in the middle of the property. And as both of you pointed out, when you look down the street, the houses are much closer to either one of the setbacks, depending upon which one you look at.
I'm okay with adding that.
Does that make sense, Dave?
I guess so, yeah, okay.
Okay. Shall we vote?
Yes. Do you want me to reread criteria A and then take a roll call?
No, I think everybody had a chance to reread it. I think we're good.
Okay. Jeff?
Yes.
Chad?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Kristin?
Yes.
So the criteria.
Has been met.
Yep.
Okay. Everybody take a minute to review this one. Thoughts before we vote?
What is the actual variance that we're looking for? Mr. Parks, you said something about flipping the house, and it was less than mirroring the house? And that's having it flipped, so that studies on the other side?
That's with it being applied to a 50-foot setback from Trillium Ridge versus a 35-foot setback. It's a 35-foot setback from Trillium Ridge, it's only nine feet.
So you're asking for a 31-foot variance, so you will end up with a 19-foot setback, correct?
We would only, we would end up, since we flipped the house, we were able to reduce the need.
So you don't have that plan in your package?
I don't have that plan, okay.
We, we just took the house and flipped it, and it didn't impact any vehicles. So this side is longer, you see, in the way the property is cutting. So it reduced this to barely encroaching. We, these are different lines, so this is the 50-foot. So what we were asking for was, call it 27 feet off of the east.
Okay, so this is, the request is, so let me just make notes on this. I did not.
That's completely different than what we have in our package.
That.
It's just, like, literally the house.
So, but that's important, because if this is granted, the exact number of feet needs to be. Yes, okay. Find my page here. Okay, so that is actually.
So this is Trillium Ridge.
They were asking for 19 feet, now what is it?
They wanted 19 foot setback, now they want 27 foot setback, so you're further.
So they're, it's an eight-foot, eight-foot variance instead of 19.
Eight, got it.
And it's 26 feet?
Yes.
All right.
As for, on this, though, it's, it's 18.
Right, so they're asking for less of a variance, they're getting further away.
Right.
And we're using, so.
So this is not really talking about here.
Is this in the application?
No. I mean, you can make it less, you can't make it more.
Yeah, understood.
Right. So. Two inches, you could get in trouble, okay?
Well, you're 27.
Okay, so you're asking for.
Or I get what you're saying.
Yeah, right, because it, it has to be.
Yeah, 26 feet off of the east.
26 feet off of the east would be the corner of the house.
The nearest corner.
Yeah.
To the.
Okay. Okay.
So that would be basically, what do we have there?
So you're going 26 feet, not 27?
Well, that's.
So it's a 24-foot variance instead of 31.
Right.
So less.
So, right.
Yes.
So in your motion, you should say a 24-foot variance.
Yes, because that is why I wanted to get this exact.
I wasn't done in there, okay.
All right, we're. Just where I have the variance written down, so I make sure we're stating it correctly. Okay. There it is. Okay, so, back to B. Any other comments? Are we good with these? Are we ready to vote?
All right. The variance requested is the minimum variance needed to provide substantial relief to the applicant and be fair to other property owners and be consistent with the spirit of the ordinance. Jeff?
Yes.
Chad?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Kristin?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Okay, it is met, five to zero. So now we go to C.
Any comments? Or questions? All right, then let's vote on this one.
Sorry, just to be consistent, I'm going to read it. The need for the variance is due to unique circumstances peculiar to the property and not generally applicable in the area or the, or to other properties in the same zoning district. Chad?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Kristin?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Okay, it's met, five to zero. Are you guys ready to vote? Okay. The problem and resulting need for the variance has been created by strict compliance with the zoning ordinance, not by the applicant or the applicant's predecessors. Laura?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Chad?
Yes.
Kristin?
Yes.
This passed, five to zero.
Okay. So now we reopen the public hearing, and it is 7:27. I usually ask the applicant if they'd like to make any additional comments at this point, or if you're okay.
I would really just like to say thank you very much for considering this both times. It's been a very big learning experience for me, and ultimately, a very big dream come true. So I really do appreciate it. Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, so I would like to make the motion to approve case number ZBA 2025-03, request for a 24-foot front yard setback variance from Trillium Ridge. The applicant has met all four criteria. Can I have a second?
I'll second.
That was Chad?
Yes.
Roll call vote?
Chad?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Kristin?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes, five to zero. Okay, any public comment, not related, or any additional public comment at this point in time? Sarah, summary of action items before next ZBA meeting?
I do not have any applications, so.
So we probably will cancel the next meeting, then?
Yeah.
I think there's not an urgency to approve the minutes since.
Right, we can, yeah, we can wait till September, see if we get an application. I don't have any, I'm not anticipating it, but we could hold a month, and then you'll get through the busy summertime as well.
Okay, sounds good. And then, in that case, I'll make the motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
I think that was unanimous.